...here tonight and asked Deanna Shah if she would come and lead us in an invocation.
Okay.
Please. Father, we thank you for this evening. We can gather together here and discuss the city issues and problems and the water tower car and all this stuff, Father. We thank you that there's such unity in this city too, Father. And we bring honor to the policemen, the fire department, the city workers, the girls upstairs, and whoever's involved in the city government. We do really, really appreciate you guys for everything that you do. And also, we ask for everything to go smoothly tonight. Everything goes the way it should. And we ask for all this in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you, Deanna.
Yeah.
We'll call the meeting to order now at 7:01 PM and ask you please to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take role call?
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Chesler.
Here.
B. Porter.
Here.
Kena Dunn.
Here.
Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
I move that way, except the agenda is printed.
Second.
We actually need to amend it.
Oh.
Yeah. Do you have the time to amend that?
Hold on a little again.
Yep.
Do you want to send your motion? I'll do it.
Sure. Mike will do it.
I move that the agenda be amended by the addition of item number three, Mayor Presents the 2024-25 Budget and Military. And item number four, to set up a public hearing for the mayor's 2024-25 proposed budget and military.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Council meeting minutes of April 4th need to be approved.
I mean, move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the April 4th, 2024 regular meeting. Second.
We have a motion from Larry seconded by Jacob. All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't believe we have any preapproved reports or presentations for tonight, but is there anybody here that would like to step forward for public comment? Then we'll move to Shirley for communications.
So I do have a few things. I do want to let you know that I received an email from Kena on Tuesday, and she has resigned effective Tuesday. So she will no longer be on the city council. I also put a letter in from Karen DeCarlo, who is resigning from planning commission immediately. She's just hoping, she was hoping to, that the knowledge that she had with the MSHDA CO family position that she held would help in the planning commission, and she doesn't feel like it is. So she's decided to resign. Can I just keep going?
Sure.
Nominating petitions, I have applications down here with me. We still have three, four-year seat, or four-year terms for council seat that would expire December 1st, 2028. One partial two-year term, council seat, that would expire December 1st of 2026. And one two-year term for mayor that would expire on December 1st of 2026. The other thing that I have is yard sales will be May 17th, 18th, and 19th. Just a reminder to everybody, yard waste, I talked to Grange, or Plant Ranger Waste Management, everything will be the same as last year. They will be Bernina's containers. And that will happen after the yard sales, May 20 through 31st. Down at the DPW, they'll be open on Mondays and Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays from 7:30 to 3:30, and Wednesdays from 7:30 to 7:00 PM, AM to PM. Close Memorial Day.
People can get those flyers.
Yes, we will post one of these on the door. They're on our website, and the website has some on the front desk. And then one more thing is that we kind of started the Pavilion Project. The funds went up today. I called the Stig, so he'll be staking that or flagging that, and then we'll hopefully start next week. So, yeah. So that's it.
Did you have information about the hazardous waste that the county is doing here?
May 11th. The county, Chiawassee County Environmental Health will have a trailer here. So I'm not sure what they bring and never come up, but they'll have something here for hazardous waste. We have information on our website and at the front desk for that also. I think it's 8 to noon.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Looking, I don't have any reports tonight. Do we have any committee reports?
I'd just like everybody to know, the ordinance committee did meet this past week, and there are a few items that are moving forward to our city attorney for review, and will be either probably not the next agenda, but our second agenda in May. Move a little additional.
Anybody have any questions for Larry? Ordinance committee? Any other committee reports?
For the parks, we have for the fundraiser for the play structure, we have right now $14,575 is what we've raised. Still have 29 days left into the deadline for, to raise money. The committee did pick a new universal design to structure, or structure, because the campaign has been so successful. So we've changed, we changed the playscape. We've picked out a different one. We are picking colors right now for the play structure. And as soon as we narrow those, the colors down, they'll actually go to the elementary school, and we're going to have the kids vote on which colors they like. And then we're going to go from there. Once we figure that out, then we should be able to order everything and get that going.
That new structure is ADA compliant?
It's ADA compliant. Yep. So.
It's more inclusive. How was the feedback?
14,575.
When we announced it, that was the feedback about the structures that we had picked out, was that, you know, they felt that there wasn't, not inclusive. And like Chad says, been so successful, we're able to do the more inclusive structure. So.
Good job. Very good, committee, Parks Committee. Very good. Any other committee reports? Any questions for the Parks Committee?
I'm sorry. Just so everybody knows again, we did Summer Fun Night last year. Summer Fun Night again is July 17th, right here at City Council. It was successful last year, and we're going to do it again this year. So I just wanted everybody to know that July 17th is Summer Fun Night.
What time?
Six day.
I have a person to request. My great-granddaughter, Masamore, is going to have the bubbles or whatever.
The phone.
The phone, the phone company that was here. I've actually got to get a hold of them and talk to them, but it sounds like when I talked to them earlier that they were, they were happy that they would do it again this year. But yeah, it's, that was a big success for us, the phone. And so, we're going to, we're going to give them a call again and see if they'll come back out.
Alsa?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
Move that we approve the bills as presented, and that payment be authorized. Second.
We have a motion from Mike seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Don't believe we have any old business, so we'll move right into new business. The first one being possible approval of the SADA resolution. SADA did send us information about what would be needed for the SADA millage to be funded. This is something that is a five-year, is that right Shirley?
Four years.
Is it a four-year, a four-year millage? And it will expire, so we'll need to have this millage on the ballot if we choose to offer that. And Shirley has given you all, I believe, information concerning that request. And so the discussion would be held tonight with possible decision or resolution to go ahead and place it on the ballot for the August election.
The last one that we've always just renewed was a four-year one as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's basically another four-year.
And nothing's changed in the language.
Yeah. I think the rate is still the same, I believe, too, isn't it?
I always read through this, and I think it's a minimal cost. And I think that if, you know, if you look at the usage most, it was medical. So I don't think, I don't think it's something we should, at least not like the public vote on. I think it's a valid transportation method for people that.
I agree. There's, you know, it's not a huge take, but of people, but those that have, but partaken of it, count on it as a service. So I think we at least, like you said, we owe it to the general public, give them the opportunity to continue or not continue it, as it's been in the past.
Anyone else have any comments? Any more discussion? Looking then for a resolution to place it on the ballot.
I move, I'll see if I can mull it through this rate.
Sorry.
That's okay. We should know how to do it without you spoon feeding it to us anyways. I move that whereas the city of Perry, Council, Perry City Council believes that it is desirable to provide the future of public transportation available to city residents by continuing the levy of millage, a millage for the purpose and, whereas the Michigan Constitution of 1963 requires that the levy of the constituents, wait.
Continuation.
Continuation, thank you, of a millage by authorized, deauthorized by a vote of electorate and, whereas the election is presently scheduled to be held in the city August 6, 2024, now therefore be it resolved with the following proposal certified by the county clerk and submitted to the electorate of the city of Perry at the August 6, 2024 election. Do I have to continue the bottom part?
Yep.
Special millage proposal, the purpose, proposal requests authorization for a levy of the continuation of a millage for the purpose of supporting and the provision of public transportation services in the city of Perry. This millage would be used to defray the expense of existing transportation services provided by the Chiawassee Area Transportation Agency and to be used to defray the expense of transportation services in the future. If authorized by the voters, it is estimated that the levy of the entire millage would generate $11,520.25 the first year. Shall a special millage for public transportation services be levied in an amount not to exceed .25 mils or 25 cents per thousand of taxable valuation annually for a period of four years? Second.
We have a motion by Bob seconded by Jacob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We now have some updated budget and health insurance cost information that Megan is coming up to tell us about.
You, Shirley.
So we did receive actual insurance increase data. We had projected a 7% increase in the draft budget that we went over at the workshop last meeting. The actual increase is 9.12%. So I've made adjustments to the budget draft that we were working on and rounded up to a flat 10% increase. So the sheet that you have in front of you outlines the lines within the budget that had insurance expenses in them. With the 7% is what you saw at our budget workshop meeting. With the 10% is the increase in costs. Now that we have actual numbers, you'll notice that there's not actually a 3% increase between those two numbers. That's because in our original draft budget, my memo on the police department line said 7% increase, but Kyle had already factored in a 10% increase. So there is no increase there. And the police department has the largest bulk of, because they have the largest number of employees. There was also an error on the DPW line of the general fund, so that amount actually went down a little bit. So overall, the total increase to the budget is just under $2,000 now that we have that actual insurance information. Any questions about that? Okay. The other change that I've made to the draft budget since we met is that the ambulance assessment has been adjusted per SASSA's request to show an $120 per unit ambulance cost. That does not affect the bottom line as it's money in, money out, as we transfer those funds to SASSA after they're collected. Same thing goes for the SADA special assessment. SADA sent us an estimate for, we have an estimate of the 23-24 cost. We had to round up and assume that the price will go up for that service again next year. Again, money in, money out. We don't know until a year later. They usually tell us your commitment will not exceed X dollars, and then it might come in a little bit less, but it won't exceed that. So we're projecting enough funds from the SADA special assessment just to cover the costs of what that estimate is. We also recently received the 2024 millage reduction fraction computation. That's what determines your heavily roll back for the year. So our reduction refraction is .9882%. So our current millage rate is 12.6434 mils. It's getting rolled back to 12.4942 mils. I had projected 770,000 in real and personal tax in our draft budget, but now that I have these final actual numbers, and I've plugged those in, it's actually increasing our taxable revenue to 791,000 this year. I just had projected low, just in case. So that has also been updated in the draft.
Just about $19,000 increase.
21. I had not heard that from anybody since our last meeting. If they wanted us to review anything further or make any cut submissions. So what I have in front of you is what I think is ready to go for the proposed public hearing potentially.
And you can stay, stay right there. Does anybody have any questions for Megan regarding the revised budget amounts? If you do, we'll ask those now. If not, we'll move right into the 2024 proposed budget and millage rate. She's already kind of covered the millage rate there for you, but do you have any questions about that millage rate? The process, just to remind us, is that if we have a proposed budget and we know what the millage rate will be, is that we now would move ahead to a public hearing date. And then once the public hearings held, then barring any need for time to make any changes based on the public hearing, we could at that point go ahead and approve the budget and the millage for the upcoming budget year. So as part of our agenda tonight, we also need to set a public hearing for their proposed budget and millage rate. So any discussion on the budget? We did have our workshop. We met prior to the council meeting, and Megan went through it all with us, line by line. She did a great job, and we appreciated that. Does anybody have anything they wanted to bring up regarding that budget? No, we haven't heard anything, but.
I just, I just think everything went good. For my first time, even though it's a lot of numbers and stuff, I think all the department heads really made it simple for people that haven't seen this, and for those that saw it publicly. So I just, good job. I mean, it's pretty easy follow-up.
Department heads worked with Megan to get that all put together, but I think it's obvious, once we sit down and go through all that and compare it to what it was last year, that it does become even more obvious on paper that the department heads are working toward keeping costs down. They're not, you know, trying for more just because they didn't spend it all last year. They are, every single one of them. So thank you for that.
I will draw your attention to just one thing real quick on page seven. I just wanted to point out that our, our projection for 23-24, if nothing changes between now and the end of the year, we're projecting a $240,000 surplus. That's the insurance money that we know won't be spent till next year. So if you look at these two years, the year we're in, at the draft in front of you, if you look at them as two years as a whole, we're only using 2,000 of our, our fund balance. So the two years wash each other out. So we're dipping into fund balance next year, but we're building it up this year. So it'll kind of be a wash after the two-year period.
Both those years, unfortunate tornado, but we had insurance money, and then we had ARPA money.
Yes.
So those things are going to go away, because we, one, we don't want another tornado.
Right. But, but at this point, I don't.
Revenue's not going to come again.
But the, the money coming in and the money going out, like, they're all washing themselves.
Right.
There's not, there's not anything extra. I feel that, that we won't have revenue and, and have to cut some large expense because of it. Like, everything else is pretty.
It's balanced.
Standard practice items. The downfall, the downfall is we're not making any large-scale capital improvements either. We're keeping, you know, we're, we're operating. We're not making large-scale improvements.
Yeah. The only one that, and I called Kyle and talked to him, because I told him I felt like I was picking on the police, and I'm not. That's, everyone did a good job, and even Kyle. It's the only thing, I don't think we can afford to add that extra police officer. But I suggested, and he thought it was a good idea, except, was once we get the marijuana shops going, we get that money, then we can say, we can make a resolution and say, that money, the share from the state that comes back, goes directly for a police officer for X myriad time, X time period, in five years, three years, whatever that is. And he goes, that's a good idea, except someone else may take it. And that's why I said, well, we could make a resolution that we could try to stop that. But I, I, you know, I tried to be very fiscally sound, and I just had a, I know when you say we're, we're on budget, but really we're not, because it's, and don't take this the wrong way. It's not a shell game, but it's, we've had extra money with ARPA, and we have extra money with the insurance money. But we still can't fix all the sidewalks. We, that was a big chunk of stuff that we spent, and there's no improvement, like you said. So I really think we need to look at that strongly and closely, because it's, because it's not just a salary, it's all the benefits that go with that salary. It's like, what was that number I had before? Like $190,000?
I could not understand this correctly, but the reason the budget's balanced is because we're taking money that we are finding for future expenses and putting them into motor pool fund and other funds. So we're saving cash for future capital expenses, whether it's for DPW equipment.
Which we should be.
Right. So, you know, on paper, it's a wash, but really we're putting money in savings accounts for various expenses later. Like, this year, we're paying $331,000 cash for the VAC truck.
Right. The next coming budget, yeah.
But that was saved up.
Yes.
For several years.
So we're saving. It's not like we're, we're running on a hair string budget, and we're, you know, going to have to finance something when we're in a pinch.
We could, though. Look, we just, this is a perfect example of the tornado. We, really was hard to come up with this money, and we didn't fix it. We're still trying to figure out how we're going to replace buildings that weren't insured. So we had, that's a capital expense.
That weren't insured for full cost.
Full cost. Yes. Thank you for the clarity. But it wasn't, you know. So we have that money that we have to outlay. And just like us, as regular people, you know, if something happens, we lose our job tomorrow, we have no income. So we have to have somewhat of cushion. We're, the city really doesn't have any. Not, if everything came due today, we couldn't do anything more. Yes, we have the money in the CDs, but all that, you know, the VAC truck and everything else, everything broke down today. We couldn't replace it. We have a well that needs to be replaced. I know Kevin's put some money in the budget, but it can't be done right away.
Look, we have fund balance. We're just choosing not to, like, dive all in on all the fund balance at once.
We do have some cushion, Bob, and I, and I don't, I don't mean to penny, penny, I don't mean to pick on.
Yes, and I'm not trying to pick on one.
I just want the public to understand, we do have some cushion. We do. But we couldn't take $100,000 and put in new sidewalks somewhere, because that's our cushion.
Correct. What would take away from something else?
We want to keep a cushion. We want to keep a cushion.
Right. And I, and that's why, and it's, I really looked through this strongly, and then I told Kyle, like, oh, we talked on the phone. Not picking on the police, but it's, it's easy picking, because we already have full-time, four full-time. Would it be cheaper to pay some overtime for those four we have instead of hiring a whole brand-new one that you have insurance and retirement and everything? You know, it's not just 50 grand or 54, it's more like 71 or 70, somewhere in that range. So it's not just.
Something, I think that's what I was looking for, a different solution right now. I'm off, if we had, if we had little zones of money, it's fine. Get, you know, hire as many as we need. That's not my point. Again, I'm not picking on them. It's just, it's one of those things that it's a little less, and I don't want to use the word important, because the police are important, but it's something that, it is more discretionary in a sense, the fifth officer. And I'm all for it. We can make somehow make it written in stone that once we start getting, we have, we have one store that has been brought to us and is going to start construction, I assume, this summer. You know, once we get that 50 grand or 60 grand, whatever that is that we're sharing is, we can allocate that for that purpose. That's all, that's why I look at it. So.
At this point, it's in the budget, doesn't mean we're going out and spending that either. The council will decide.
I know, he didn't spend it last year. It was in there last year, but it's like, it's, you know, if I got, that's all. I just, that's the way I look at it. That's all I have to say about that.
All in all, yeah, the department's heads, and we've met, and we've gone through our hands through all of the numbers, and I think that personally, we're ready to move forward. You'd like to have a lot more revenue. You'd like to have a lot less expenses, but the reality is, I think it's done a good job or a great job in putting together a roadmap for this coming budget year.
I agree.
I told him that. I thought, I said, I hadn't talked to anyone else. They all did a really good job, but it was really hard to find anything. The only thing I could see was that one officer, and that was the only thing I could think of. And I'm just one voice on this council that we could do to help that. That's, that's it.
And I, and I appreciate you speaking, you know, to Kyle about that. He, he has been very concerned about the budget and came to me and to Megan, I mean, and during our budget workshop to express that. So it is something he's very conscious of, but I think it's wise of us to leave it in the budget in case it's necessary. And if it's not necessary, we won't use it. That's how it works. Any other discussion about the budget or the millage? If not, then I'm looking for a resolution for the millage rate and to set a public hearing.
Move that we set a public hearing for Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, at 7:10 PM at Perry City Hall on the proposed 2024-25 city budget and on the city's tax millage rates for the same fiscal year.
Second. We have a motion from Mike seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is an item that we did discuss when we did switch our trash pickup company, and that's curb. and that's curbside recycling. Shirley got information from Waste Management about the cost and the procedure for curbside recycling. This is something that we decided not to do when we changed companies, mostly because of the cost. But it is something that's an all-or-nothing item. So, it would need to go to a vote, at least I think it would need to go to a vote of the public if we decided to put it on the ballot. But questions, discussion regarding the curbside recycling surely has been the ones to talk to.
So, the only reason I pursue this is because I've had new people who are new to town. They always ask. I've had some residents of the neighborhood a long time who just, hey, what about recycling? So, I thought that I would just reach out and check with our contact at Waste Management. The cost would be about $5 a household.
Per year?
A month, $5 a month.
Yes, $5 per month.
So, this, this is what they would do with the ton?
So, yes, this is a flyer that she sent me that, it's for Gaines Township right here. But that's what they send out. That's, on the backside is all their acceptable materials. They would come every other week. So, it would be every other week pickup. The can would have a yellow top on it. Same thing as the cans they have now. They would have, uh, uh, numbers inside it.
Serial numbers.
Yes, yes. And then, and it is an all or nothing. They do have like an option to have like some sort of like birdhouse container or something like that that they would bring and drop off and put the DPW, but I just think that's, um, would be...
People would want to be able to follow direction.
Exactly, so, uh, yeah, that, I don't think is a good idea, but, you know, when I was talking to Sue, she, you know, at first didn't think it was a, a very good idea, but then you talked to somebody out, your husband or something?
Yeah, I asked, I asked my boss at home and he said, "Yeah, go for it."
Yeah.
So, here we are.
Yeah, so, and I think it's a good idea to have everybody vote on it. If we wanna do it, then if it doesn't go through, then, you know.
Personally, I would do it. I have a huge recycle thing in my garage. About once every five weeks or so, I drive all the way to Lansing.
And at this point, this year's been one of my...
Because that one's too hard to get open hours.
I, the other thing I see on this is like, I know me personally, I order a lot off Amazon. Unfortunately, unfortunately. And I just know I fill my, my single container pretty quickly. So, having a recyclable option, I think it's more conscientious and also might free up some garbage space. I think that's been a big complaint with the new service is the, when they're trash cans.
What, what are you, what are we pairing off for trash? What was it?
13 and 25.
14 million, yeah, 14 something.
13 or 15.
It's going up, though.
It did, it did go up.
And that is the rate, the increase?
It was 12, 15, 13, 15. Yep, yep, so it did go up.
So, it'd be, it'd take everybody to 18, 25 with both containers.
Yes.
The, the nice thing about this too, at least I think, is that it is a single-stream recycling. So, you don't have to sort everything out. You don't have to have glass in one, paper in one. You just put it all in one container and they sort it out.
And the same thing applies. I think that I read in here that you were able to get an extra one and you would do the same thing, just call Waste Management, like you do for an extra trash.
Yes, it, it says something about that. It doesn't say how much that would cost, but it does say you can ask for a separate one, a second one.
And I can find out all those details too, if, if you guys think that we should pursue it, so. I did make a motion. I just thought it would be a discussion, so, yeah.
If, if everybody wants to think about this more, but perhaps request that Shirley prepares a motion?
Sure.
For our next meeting and then we can decide at that time if we wanna put it on the ballot.
Yeah, if we're gonna put it on the ballot, I think we should.
Yeah.
Well, again, that was... I have no problem with that. I, I, I support it because I do it already. Well, if you need to pull it off to the street.
Right, and like you said, you're spending more than $5 driving to Lansing to recycle.
I know there's one of my, it's purpose, their hours are limited and for me, it's easier to do that.
Okay, if there's no...
Thank you for looking into that, sure.
No further discussion regarding curbside recycling. We'll move on to the item number six under new business and ask Kevin if he'll explain this to us. Possible approval of extra cost from Granite and Liner. Did I say that right? Granite?
Yes. We did our physical repair on Washington Street and after the physical repair was completed, we called Granite and Liner to come do the lining project that the council approved. It was earlier in the budget year, last year sometime. Took us a while to get everything fixed up and ready for that to be completed. After we did the physical repair, put everything back the way that it should have been to begin with, we continued with the, the lining project, which part of their process is they have to jet and TV that so that they can guarantee their work. They have to know that the line is, is sound and that it's worth lining and the longevity of the liner is based on the structure, so. Because we had to do the physical repair, they had to come back through and do an inspection and then line it. So, the cost is for the cleaning and inspection of the pipe, which was no fault of them. It was our pipe that was failed and...
That's the remobilization fee?
Yeah, to, to jet it, send a crew out, jet it and TV it, so.
The other, 35, 36 was already approved, right?
Yes, yes. So, this is just the additional cost. I think it's 3,000.
3,000 it says here.
So, it's just looking for approval of that because it was over and above what council had previously approved for the contract. So, we just...
Did they already do this?
Yes, it's all completed and working. We kind of come back out for a circus ball to do a little more trimming on the one end, but yeah, it's all, it's working well. We check it weekly.
Good. So, we, we cannot not approve those.
Well, I move that we approve the additional charge for Granite and Liner for sewer lining on Washington Street in the amount of $3,000.
Second. We have a motion by Mike, seconded, was that not, was that you?
Yes.
By Bob? All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
You take it with that? Motion passed. Kevin wanted to have you guys all notice something that's outside. Don't run up now. They'll, they'll look at it after the meeting's over.
There's a few more showed up this week, so, actually, it was late last week, but this was the first meeting since we've had it. I wanted to show it out before we got it all covered in grass and burying, so.
Looks good.
If anyone wants to take a look at it, I'll hang out for a few minutes after the meeting. Thank you all.
Just no commute, right?
Yeah.
Hey, can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you have any updates on the DPW programs that you could share during the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm meeting with the, the engineer tomorrow to look at the site plan.
Cool.
Once we initiate a site plan and we have something to give contractors to, to look at, like a spec, then, then we can look at, at getting bids for that and hopefully move forward. We, we have included some funds in the budget for potential construction, estimated based on figures we've seen in doing our other construction project and, and estimates during the tornado. So, we're gonna get a plan together and hopefully bring something to council before, before too long. And so, yeah, it's all, all good things. So, no more tomorrow and then we'll have further discussions about that in the near future, hopefully, so.
Cool. She just mentioned that it broke down, so I was thinking, I wonder if...
We haven't broken down yet. Next week.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
They put the fence up.
Yeah.
Forget the fence up.
Partner bear. Yeah, yes, we did break ground with the survey states. How's that?
One other question, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Hi. I obviously used the disposable area for a malus last week and what's the status in terms of getting that company in that's gonna help chip and shred and that felt that was gonna happen here as a result of the tornado?
So, the brush?
Yep, the brush.
Is, is that, yeah, it's, it casts a big shadow that I'm stuck in. I've been in contact with the company recently and they were plagued with breakdowns because they worked pretty much right through the winter. They didn't have much of a shutdown due to the weather being so nice. So, they were plagued with breakdowns and then their whole crew got an illness and they've been out of commission for a couple of weeks. So, it kind of put their timeline back a little bit. I, I'm bugging them a lot to, I tell them all the time, you know, the city of Perry needs you and, you know, it's, it's approved for us to spend the...
It's all the plans that's kept away them.
Yeah, so, I mean, he told me after the first of the year and now we're into the second quarter, so I'm still working on it. If we had another option, I would definitely be looking at the other option, but they've worked with us to get to this point and I just kind of wanna get it over, over the hump here, so. I, I don't think they could have done anything differently up to this point. It's just, you know, you can't, you can't predict how life works for, for other people and all they can do is keep begging and pleading to fulfill their obligations, so. Hopefully, we don't have to extend that or carry that money over or anything like that because we didn't include that in the budget, so. I'll tell them he's got a deadline and try to get it here, so. But other than that...
We've moved our gutters. We got our gutters today.
Yep, I was gonna include all that stuff in my next report, but yeah. The gutter team was here today and finished up the, the new gutters on this side of the building, which matched the other side. I walked it when I got here today and they did a good job. It looks, looks really nice out there. Other than they could have blew out the sidewalk a little bit, but we'll, we'll get the guys out tomorrow. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. The next item on our agenda is a discussion regarding whether or not we want to put a revisit of the McQueen House millage on the ballot again this year in November. If you'll recall, two years ago, it was on the ballot for a $5 per household, per year millage to establish money to accrue funds for maintenance and upkeep of the McQueen House, which the city owns. It was donated to the city back in the 40s with stipulation that it be used for benefit of the residents of the city. And to date, it has been used for that. It's never been a rental property. We don't collect rent on it and that was one of the stipulations also in the donation that the city can't make money off of it. So, it kind of keeps us between a rock and a hard place, but over the years, we've, the city's done what they can and the people, the, the group that uses it and has for years now, the Perry Historical Society, has put quite a bit of money into it too, improving both the interior and exterior. But as you know, with our houses, just as much as the McQueen House, as time goes on, there's gonna be things that need to be done. I have looked into options, a few options, talked with our attorney about what we could do, honestly, to not own the house anymore. We're between a rock and a hard place. So, we'll continue to look at what those options might be, but I think to clarify the desires of the residents when it comes to the McQueen House is important for us to do if we do have to explore what our options might be. So, that's, it's just my thought and it's open for discussion and we don't have to vote on a resolution tonight, but Shirley prepared it in case we were ready to vote on it tonight. But I think we need to bring it back in front of the voters so that we have a very clear picture of what they want in regard to the McQueen.
Look back to November of last election. It's when it was, when it was on the ballot and it was for the same number that we're looking at, .1 mill, just like we had passed on the parks. There were 822 people that actually cast a ballot and it was defeated at that point, 381 to 441. So, less than two years ago, we had 910 people that voted, of which, like I say, 822 actually checked yes or no for the McQueen House, but it did go down in defeat.
They did, voters didn't have a, a choice at that time. I, I think most people took a choice. They could pay $5 a year for parks or $5 a year for the McQueen House or both. And the parks passed, but the McQueen House did not, took a then and a shock.
Just to be fair, the park proposal did pass. There were 839 people that checked yes or no and that passed 477 to 352.
So, very close too. I mean, they were really both very close, almost 50/50 in both cases, but in favor of passing for the parks and not for the McQueen House.
46/53 and 58/42 basically for the, the two. I'm just concerned that we, two years later, that we told you no and we're back two years later and said, "Well, how about now?"
I made myself some notes when I got my packet. That's one of them. The president's already said no. But, and I'm glad you talked to Justin English, but do we have the, does he have the original deed or...
Yeah, we have it.
Do we have her probate records for, Bessie, the Queen's probate records for that?
We have it all, yeah.
Because we have it all. There's no way to get out of this. Okay, anything be for a hundred years.
I'm not saying there's no, there's no way.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I think too, if the decision is to absolutely try to get out of ownership of that house, we need as much strength as we can and the power of the people. And if you just wanna rely on the previous vote, which was almost a 50/50 as evidence that the city residents don't wanna own it, we can just move ahead with that and...
The turnout was pretty good too.
Yeah.
I mean, it was 60% turnout, 2,000-person city, 910 showed up and...
If it goes on the November ballot, it'll be, because it's a presidential election, you'll have more, I think. Because that was just a gubernatorial. Can we put, instead of putting the language of a millage on there, can we put the language, this is not an English question, not me. Can we ask the citizens, do we wanna continue to own this or should pursue to give it to the Historical Society? If they don't want it, then let's, what is the other solution?
We, we can't give it away. I already found that out.
Okay.
That's...
We can't profit off of it, we can't give it away.
You got it. Between a rock and a hard place. But are we sure Justin, you know, really, I mean, he's gonna have to put more time into this to figure out if we can not own it anymore. So, before we do that, I, I think we should absolutely know that that's what we wanna do. And I'm fine either way.
Instead of asking for a millage that we already, that we already asked for and voted on, maybe the question is, should we pursue not owning this anymore? I guess it's a question to the residents of the city because this is, this, the Historical Society's put a lot of money into it. The city has put a lot of money into it in the last four years since I've been on council, Larry's not council, and you've been mayor. So, it's not gonna stop. It's, you know, the, the house is older than mine. It's 130 years, 20 years old, something like that. So, the, the upkeep and the, the cost is not going to stop. And what the phenomenon in America is, is that cities have had these things given to them or they own and they're selling them or letting them deteriorate to the point where they just tear them down.
Yeah, Wausau just...
Wausau just sold one of theirs.
Or this, this week.
Yeah, they just sold it.
Yeah, they sold it though.
They own the Curwood Castle and then they chose not to keep the other one, where I don't own that at all.
The thing that comes to my mind is, I know that there was a lot of work done. I almost wonder if what we were asking previously was too much, you know? We, in the last four years, I know it's been well-maintained exteriorly. I don't know what was done interior-wise.
There's been a lot, but most of it was done by the historicalists.
Yeah, but do we need, you know, the levy of point one mill, can we do half of that? If we're levying it over twenty years...
Just for visualization, point one mills for the parks in its first year was just over five thousand dollars.
Yeah. But if you're doing it for twenty years and you're not gonna have ideally an expense, a large expense for, I don't know, five to ten years, you're gonna accrue some sort of balance, right?
Five thousand a year. So that's, that's one plumbing failure, one furnace, but not even a furnace, right?
A furnace, so it costs you more than that.
Right.
I mean, I just had my furnace place, it was four thousand dollars. My AC was fifty-one hundred dollars.
It's expensive.
It is, but you're only doing that once every ten, fifteen for AC, thirty for furnace. So my point is, we are gonna be accruing money if the roof's been done, the siding's been done, the paint's been done. We're really not gonna, we're gonna be able to build some sort of bank, if you will.
It's been recommended to do an automatic standby generator on site so the power does well in the winter time and doesn't freeze plus the plumbing. The furnace will still operate and...
And that's ten grand, right?
Yeah, so also, I mean...
For that, obviously, it'd be ten grand.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying keep it or don't keep it. I'm just, I'm just throwing another point about, you know, if it wasn't approved, maybe it was because people felt five dollars a month is too much. I don't know.
It's five dollars a year.
Oh.
Yeah, it's one, one time, you know, the, whatever, summer taxes or whatever, whatever it's on. I don't, I can't speak to why people voted to down, you know? I, I know that it has very limited hours. Of course, I'm not here here today, so I don't know. I don't drive by, I don't, I, I go in the morning, I come back at night, so. But, you know, the city is, like you said, in a rocky, hard place because we, we own it technically, but we don't have control over it. The historical society does. So we can't say, well, it's gonna get over from eight to nine, you know, from nine to five or nine to two or whatever, you know, three days a week. We don't, we don't have that control. So, and then there's no entry fee, not that there should be, but, you know, all those things, all, there's, we have no, we wanna, we need to have the first strings, but then, you know, it's like, you know, having a teenager, they just, you get in the car and the gas card and never ask where you're going. You know, oh, you used a hundred dollars of gas this month. You, you don't ask that question. It's the same, you know, not the same, but it's, it's a hard situation. I agree with you a hundred percent, so it is, it's very hard.
I mean, I, I would like to be able to have Justin investigate this more, but of course...
Did you have an opinion either way about putting it on the ballot?
Um, I didn't ask him then. I did not.
I'm not opposed to putting it on the ballot to ask, should the city continue owning this house or not? And the expenses associated with it. I just got heartburn of going back after we got a no. Granted, it wasn't a huge, you know, eighty, twenty or anything, but it was a no. But we're not saying, okay, he said no, but let's go back at you again.
Yeah.
But the same question, that if it was five, ten years, I'd certainly say, let's do it.
Yes, maybe it was more than just two years, maybe. But we filled this room a month ago with the proposal, case millage. And then there was a pretty much a consistent theme was, you know, I don't wanna pay more taxes, I don't want to pay more taxes. So right or wrong, that is, I think, the attitude of everybody. And, you know, it's hard, I love the McQueen House. It's a cool house. I love old houses. I've lived in one. But it's a hard pill to swallow to have to pay for something that I, I can't go and look, walk into. And does it give the value that it maybe at once did or should? I, I don't know. I really don't.
Well, I, I, I'm hearing everything you're saying and I'm wondering if perhaps you'd like me to meet with Justin and talk with him more in depth about it all and see what his recommendations would be. Should we put it on the ballot asking? Should we own it anymore? Or is that futile if we don't have any way to not own it anymore? I, you know, I think that needs to be a question before we ask.
There was something like that on the August ballot, could we then put it on the November ballot? If, let's say it came back as a yes, people do want to own it?
Oh, I'm sure could, yeah. Put the millage request on.
Oh, if we put the millage on the August ballot, you mean?
Well, the question on the August...
The question, should they...
Shouldn't they get a yes back? Should we get a yes back as far as should be owned or not? Then it's only three months down the line.
Right.
Then be able to put it on the November ballot.
I think it's a good idea, except I would only add one thing in my opinion on that. Should we own it and should the city residents help pay for it? Or are you willing, yes, we wanna keep it, or are you willing to have a millage to keep it? I, I don't know how to word it.
Sounds like two questions.
You're right, but I don't know how to word it. And then, you know, just because they wanna, but I guess you could just answer, you wanna keep it.
And, and you could put it, you could put it into one question, you know, as far as, you know, should the city continue to own it? And put this much towards it, approximately five dollars a year proposal?
Right.
You could phrase that into a question, but...
Yeah, then see if there is at least a interest to try that way. But first you have to find out if, what is the, what is the avenue? Are we stuck a hundred percent, there's no way to do anything? Then that, that question removed.
Okay.
Can I just throw something out there too?
Absolutely.
So something that's came up to me a couple of times talking with different presidents was parking downtown, which I'm not opposing that, but it is a big lot. Is there any possibility, if we do get to that point, we could discuss splitting the lots? Is it possible to split that lot? It's a fairly large city lot.
I don't think...
To keep the land and then so if we got to that point?
I don't absolutely know that answer, but I don't think it's been big enough to split.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah, there's just, there's some space between the back of the house, so the north side of the house and then the lot line for the house next to it, but it's not sixty-six feet.
No, okay.
I mean, maybe we could split it, but leave it or attach it to, if we attached it to the parking lot to the west.
Yeah, and that's kind of where they have thoughts.
But it wouldn't have to be a legal split. Then it's just an add-on.
Of the already municipal.
Yeah, so that could possibly become some parking.
Any outdoor events, because that's where the parkers market and the craft show and things were held on that park, you know, outdoor thing, so. There's no easy solution. But I think we just need to get a clear signal, are people willing to pay for it? Rather than just go back and ask again, the same thing that got turned down.
And it does look so nice now. I hate the thought of, you know, ten, fifteen years from now, that it's back in the decrepit condition it was in before. Okay, if that, if that's what you want me to do, I will. I'll sit down with Justin and we'll hash this out a little better and I'll bring you that information. When I have it.
Thank you.
Is there any other business that may come before council tonight? Do we have any, anyone that would like to make public comment at this time? Council discussion and observations?
I have one thing before, do we need to make, accept this reservation, resignation and then Kina's or you bring that to the next meeting?
I'll bring that to the next meeting. Meeting for Kina, I don't think we need to do that.
We don't need to do anything for this one? Accept the resignation?
I don't know, we'll have to check.
Check.
Yeah, we do, we'll have to bring it, yeah.
Probably always did, but I, I think we're voting.
I think we do.
We, we vote to put them on, or approve that they're appointed.
We will accept her resignation and appoint somebody new, in the same thing, so once...
Well, but we not have, we do by then, but we do have to accept it, I think. But check on that if you would please and bring it next time that we do, and Kina's as well. Other agenda items for our next meeting would include the SESA, Special Assessment.
You have the curb side on there, recycling?
And then the curb side recycling.
This may be a little preemptively, but if we get the funds, if we get fully matched, would we want to consider pre-ordering? Is that something we have to bring, Megan?
We would have to have council approval to spend the money, so we'll, I'll keep an eye on it in the next meeting and see if that'll be first meeting of the year or second.
Okay.
I'm confident right now with what we know is in the pipeline, that we, as long as we, we get colors and get votes in first, that's the table of time. But we have, we'll have the funds on hand and we can order the unit even before the campaign closes and we get them matching from the back end, so.
The lead time's a fairly long item and if we're starting at the building, we just, we're thinking it'd be ideal to get ahead so that we could try to this product completely.
Some evening, we can go, or we can ask for...
Okay.
Yeah, if the park committee would just present that request to Shirley through Megan or however you wanna do it, to have a agenda item for approval to spend the money for the, the park, place, whatever you call it. Playwood and stuff you climb on.
Well, the structure.
There you go, thank you.
And then maybe a possible McQueen House recording of...
Um, I don't, I don't think I'll probably have anything because I think he's gonna have to do some deep digging. So I'll, I'll bring it when I have it, when I have a report on our options from Justin.
What's the deadline for the August ballot, Shirley? To be able to put something on it?
Uh, you know what, I'm not sure, so I will have to look.
Look that, so, because that, and I, it's gonna take him a while, but then we have an idea, oh, we need to tell him, hey, can we have it by this? And he may not be able to.
Right.
I, I think I'll sit down with him, that'll...
Yeah. So if you have a say, hey, you know, we have to have a decision or we need to know what to do by tax, whatever that date is.
Yeah. Anything else? Meeting's adjourned, eight oh two. Thank you all.
Thank you.